Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order, the City of Kingman Meeting of the City of Council at 5:01 on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. Clerk Meredith, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Watkins is with us on Zoom this evening. Vice Mayor Samley, here. Councilmember Pat?
Present.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Michael Bell of Kingman Nazarene Church. If all please rise, and then after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Walker.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide our city council as they meet and discuss the matters with regard to our city today, that they shall choose to do that which is moral and rational, that their motivation is everything they want to do, and is for the good of the public and not for their own. I pray that be able to solve our city's problems and make good policies that address them, help them to be competent and excellent in their government. Most of all, I pray that these councilmen, who don't know their son, your son Jesus, will get an encounter with him, surrender their lives to him, live a life that glorifies God. May God richly bless this council and this meeting today. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This evening, I have the distinct pleasure of awarding a proclamation to the Women Making History, proclaiming March Women Making History Month. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas American women from all walks of life have improved their communities and our nation, standing resolute in the face of adversity and overcoming obstacles to realize their full measure of success. Whereas, women play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of our nation's life. Beyond serving as a vital part of the labor force, American women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every progressive social change movement, securing their own right of suffrage and equal opportunity, and contributing to movements which secure the rights of people of all races, classes, and ethnic backgrounds. Whereas, we honor and carry forth the legacy of the women who have shaped our nation as we teach our daughters to preserve through obstacles and inspire them to reach for their highest aspirations and achieve true equality. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the month of March to be designated as Women Making History Month, and specifically designate Sunday, March 5th, 2023, as Women Making History Day. And in doing so, urge all citizens to join me in honoring the history and contributions of American women and the important roles that they have played in the growth of our nation, state, and our city. In witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand cause to be affixed, Mayor Ken Watkins. I know that... Thank you. I know that Betsy Parker is here to speak.
And we have two committee members also with us.
Sure. Please bring them up. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. I would like to invite all of you...
If you'll speak into the microphone at the podium.
I would really love it. I don't know if you can just tip it towards me like that?
You need to address...
Direction. Sorry, audience. I'll have you later.
Follow directions, Betsy.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor Watkins. Thank you so much, Cherish. We look forward to this event every year, and we are missing Crystal Burge this year, Teri Chavez, and Megan McCoy. But we have with us Cheryl Smith, and we have Pat Mullen Lamb. Our ceremony is going to be March 5th at 2:00 PM at St. John's Methodist Church. And before we accept the proclamation and take a photo, I would like to turn around and honor the people in the audience who have already won this award. The three of us have won the award. There's some people in the audience, and there's a council member who has also won the award. And I'd like you to give them all a round of applause.
Congratulations. Council, would you join me down below for a photo, please?
We'll wait for them to tell us where to stand. It's better if you stand on this side of the podium, only because it's... Yeah. Yep, and then the taller people on the ledge and the shorter people in the front. Yes. That's great. Shorter people in the front? Yes, please.
I follow directions.
Yes. And I'm here, the taller person. Yep. So can I have either Keith or Sean come on this side? We're just... Because we're a little balanced. Yeah, that's perfect. And when you come down? Okay. Ready? One, two, three.
Good job.
No wrinkles, Sarah. I know you have to go really high for that. Well, again, thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Hope I see you. Congratulations, Annie. Thank you very much. Who is one of our... She's a winner this year.
I'm not sure that the audience heard that, but congratulations to our own Clerk Annie Meredith, who is a winner, award winner this year. So congratulations. All right, moving on. We have called to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Clerk Meredith, do we have anyone online or via email?
Vice Mayor Samley, nobody has requested to join us online this evening. There were no written comments received ahead of time, and there is one speaker signed up in the audience.
Perfect. Will Mr. Michael Degroot, please, join us at the podium?
Good evening, Council.
Make sure you speak.
Thank you for listening to my...
Into the mic. Very good.
Excuse me, my case, as it were. I'm an automotive enthusiast. One of the reasons I was attracted to Kingman is the car culture, the motorcycle culture, and so forth. I was once a mechanic years ago. Now it's just a hobby for me. And consequently, I frequently bring home vehicles that are in need of repair, and they don't run on their own. So I have a flatbed trailer that I use for that purpose. Now, I've been spoken to, I haven't actually been issued a citation, I'm trying to avoid getting a citation, for having my trailer parked on the street in front of my house. I have very limited parking because I have an extremely narrow lot. I do have some parking in the back, on the alley side. I have a carport back there. But there's no place I can place my flatbed trailer where it doesn't block my other vehicles. So the place I choose to park it, or would like to be able to park it, is in front of my house. There's sufficient space for the trailer, and there's still room for the postal vehicle to get to my mailbox. So in view A, in the handouts that I gave you, this shows what the city would like me to do, to keep my trailer in the driveway at the front of my house. The problem with that is that if the trailer's pulled all the way underneath that awning that you see there, it blocks my front door. I know it's kind of hard to see in the picture. My front door opens out under the awning to the far left of the building. So if the trailer's pulled all the way under that awning where I can make room for another vehicle in front of it, I then block my doorway. My wife has health issues, and we've actually had problems where the ambulance could not get her out of the house easily because my trailer was in the way. The next view, view B, if I park my van there instead of the trailer, it blocks the neighbor's driveway, it blocks the view when they're backing out. And the reason I bring that up is when the officer talked to me about it, she mentioned that she thought the reason for the trailer law was because it might impair view of the road by other motorists. Now, that may be true of like travel trailers, things of that nature. But a flatbed trailer, if you look at view D, it shows the travel trailer in that, I mean, the flatbed trailer in that location. If anything, it has a better view of the traffic on the road than if I park a different vehicle, such as my van, at same location. And then I went around the neighborhood, because a lot of my neighbors have trailers. A lot of them are like me, the automotive enthusiasts. Many of the trailers, in the almost four years I've lived here, have never moved. And I've cited those here. And I'm not trying to get them in trouble. That's not my goal here. My goal here is to try to understand why that law applies to personal trailers in the first place, and try to either modify it or repeal that law, or maybe even create some kind of a permit for special situations such as mine, where I have limited space to park, such as in front of my house. So please review the law. I've included a, I printed out the law there for you, so you can have it at your disposal. And thank you for considering my plea, and hopefully I'll be able to park my trailer in front of my house without risk of a citation. Thanks.
Thank...
My address is on the request to speak form there, 2426 Lilly. See it there?
Thank you, Mr. Degroot. Manager Foggan?
Yes.
I'm just referring this to you. All right. Consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do any of the councils wish to pull anything from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. All right, the ayes appear to have it. Moving on to old business. This was an item that was tabled from our prior council meeting, the airport terminal interior renovations. This project is for consideration and approval for renovations of the interior of the airport terminal. It includes new windows, doors, HVAC, system corrections, and restroom updates. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan?
Thank you. I've actually invited Jack. There was some, a request for additional, a little bit more data on this. And so Jack has been working with Doug Reckonridge at the airport, who is the airport manager, to provide a little more of the data that was requested, visits, that kind of thing. Normally, I would probably just handle this item as, and just remind the council that several years ago, we actually did a remodel on the terminal building, and we recognized at that time that there was still some additional work that needed to be done as part of that. So I'll just call this phase two of that terminal remodel. Did some really important electrical upgrades, some improvements to the pilot's lounge. But because there was some request for some visitor data and that kind of, that kind of information, I am going to let Jack walk you through what he's put together with Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. As Mr. Foggan indicated, there was a request for some additional information on how much use for the airport terminal building there is. Again, that building is shared by users of the airport, both, you know, from the public and from the airside, from the pilots. The funds are actually generated from user fees for the airport. They're actually not a tax revenue. They're user fees. We don't have a exact ground count or pedestrian count in and out of the building, but approximately 28,000 operations occur at the Kingman Airport every year. And, you know, some portion of that, we know, is utilizing those amenities of the terminal building. Both the plans room, the, I guess, the chart room would be more appropriate, the restrooms and things that, you know, transit pilots and users of the airport would need. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Does council have any questions?
Just one, Mr. Pallanti. What do you mean by 28,000 operations every year? Like, what do you classify as an operation?
Flights in and out of the airport.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pat. Anybody else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, let me make one comment, and then I will make a motion. You know, just as we're sort of scrutinizing these upgrades, I would say that I've been fortunate enough to fly into a couple of different airports in the area, Sedona, which has a very busy airport. A lot of people fly in, they have breakfast, they spend their day in Sedona and leave. I've flown into the Havasu Airport. They have an executive terminal that is probably nicer than any place we have in town. I mean, and the whole point is that you have a nice terminal, you have a restaurant, because these aviation businesses are very profitable. These people usually have a lot of money. And so they're used to, you know, being able to fly in, eat, do their business while they're in town. A lot of times, people are flying in because they're connected to the industrial park or one of the other businesses, or they're here looking at Kingman to bring their business. So it is important that we have bathrooms at work, that they're not frozen, the pipes aren't frozen. That old barracks building, you know, if it was up to me, I would just build a new terminal, a new fancy terminal. But it's not up to me. So I guess my point is, is that our terminal as it stands right now is not up to par with what you would see at other smaller general aviation airports in the area. And so we need to make these upgrades, and we need to continue to be competitive with our neighboring towns so that we can attract new business. So these investments are more than just for pilots or for the café, which is also very successful, and it's been there for a long time. It's for our community and it's for economic development. So with that, I will make a motion to pass this item, or to move this item forward.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
In a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no new business this evening. We do have some department reports. Our first department report is the financial report on the water system. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. Over the last couple of years, we have needed a rate increase for our culinary water, our drinking water. And so that is upon us. But one of the things that we wanted to take an opportunity to do is walk you through what the finances, how the water system finances work, so that everybody's comfortable with the conversation as we move forward. So Ms. Tina has prepared a presentation to teach you and walk you through everything water finances. So with that, Ms. Tina.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Yeah, I can't find the... Oh, there it is. You're in that one. I'm in the correct one, right? Yep. And then... Control. I can't, though.
Everybody needs an Annie in their life, that's for sure. Thank you so much this evening. As Mr. Foggan shared, we wanted to share a little bit of information on the water system as we enter the water rate study and having those meetings in the next few months. So we thought we'd start with the basics of the water system. So the water system is what we call an enterprise system, meaning that it's like a business, meaning that its users or customers pay for the system. It is not funded with general fund sales tax dollars or state shared revenues. It supports itself from the users of the system. And so within the water system, there are four different funds that we operate. They are enterprise funds as well. And so we have a water operating fund, and that funds the general operations and maintenance of the system. Our water operations team is funded through that fund, our engineering team is funded through it, and our utility billing team is funded through that. We also have a water capital renewal fund. It is a project fund, and it pays for our major replacement, rehabilitation, and renewal projects. Our expansion fund is just that. It also pays for projects that are related to the expansion of the system. So new growth, additional infrastructure to cover new growth. And then we have a Colorado River Water Authority Fund. And that particular fund covers projects that are conservation-related, reuse-related, and new water sources-related. So now we know the funds that are in the system. How do we pay for those different funds? Or for the expenses that come out of those funds? So the operations fund is paid for primarily by our user rates, our base rate and the volume rate that we charge. So we do collect fees from non-paid disconnects, delinquent fees, return bank charges. That is very small piece of what we collect. We collect about a couple, we collect a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenues from those, but we collect close to $7 million in just the base and volume rate. So clearly, supported by those two fees. Our capital renewal fund is also supported by a user fee that is dedicated solely to capital renewal fees. We also have interest we collect in that particular fund. The expansion fund used to be supported by meter connection fees, but in 2021, the council eliminated meter connection fees and replaced them with capacity fees. And now that's what we use to support those projects. And then the Colorado River Water Authority Fund is actually a fund that we collect water rights payments through long-term agreements with Colorado River Communities and Water Districts. We entered into long-term agreements with them many years ago, and those agreements, the very last agreement, actually ends at the end of December 2024. That will be the last time we collect any monies. Eventually, this fund will go away, once all of the monies have been collected and spent. So let's look at our customers. At the end of January, we had just over 22,200 customers. We do provide water service to customers inside the city limits as well as outside the city limits. We actually provide water service to 8,300 customers outside the city limit. So a significant amount of customers, not a small amount. Most of our customers are residential customers. But what's interesting is that even though we only have 7% commercial customers, they actually generate about 25% of our total revenue. So understanding more about our customers, so the customer growth and what their consumption history has been over time. So looking back to 2013, we had 17,000, about 17,000 residential customers. And on average, they were using about 6,800 gallons per month. Over time, we continue, we are lucky because we do live in a growing and living community, and so we are adding customers to our customer base every year. And so although our customers continue to rise year over year, we've noticed that the trends for usage has continued to decline. So last year, we are averaging about, or our residential customers are averaging about 5,800 gallons per month, and we're actually noticing a decline this month to about 5,700 gallons per month. Now, that is great news, that our customers recognize how important our water source is. But when we haven't revisited our rates in a very long time, it isn't such great news. We rely heavily on the monies that we collect from volume rates. Commercial customers, looking at their growth and consumption history as well. So we also continue to increase our commercial customer base year over year. Although we are also seeing a decline in consumption history with our commercial users, they don't have quite the opportunity that our residential customers have to reduce their consumption. Sometimes, the processes that they use to manufacture their product requires a certain amount of water, and there's no way that they can consume less water. But in years where we have heavy rainfall, we notice that schools don't use as much water. We notice that some of our largely irrigated consumers for landscaping purposes for these customers also don't use a lot of water. So we do see that those customers reduce their consumption over time, have reduced their consumption over time as well. So what is our current water rate structure? Well, first, it's important to point out that we have not revisited our water rates nor our rate structure since July of 2013. And we actually have not revisited the rate structure since many years even before that. But nothing has changed since July 1st of 2013. We do have different rates for our outside-city-limit customers than we do our inside-city limits, but they do follow the same rate structure. So we have a base rate, we have a capital renewal fixed base rate also, and then we have our volume rates. We have different volume rates for our residential customers than we do for our commercial and irrigation customers. One thing that we always want to encourage is conservation. And we do that through our multi-tiered, our multi-tiered conservation, our multi-tier levels for water usage. And you'll notice that there are three different levels for residential customers. And although by having those multi-tiers, it does encourage conservation, I would say that customers who are using 10,000 gallons of water a month are still customers who are using a lot of water. And so we are looking at, we're working with our consultants and bringing something a little bit different back to the council to look at, to encourage that conservation. Because we do see customers that use well under 3,000 gallons of water, and should there be some sort of benefit for them in not maybe having to pay as much per thousand gallons that they're using? So to give a little, just a little bit of history on where the rates were prior to July of 2013, I started with 2007 because there was a pretty comprehensive study that went, that was underway in 2008. And so those rates that came out of that study were put into place in 2009. And so in 2009, we noticed that because of that study, there was almost a 90% increase in the base rates and a 10% increase in the volume rates. We also noticed that there was another rate increase in 2010 that was about 10% across the board. And in 2011, it was a much smaller rate increase. 2012, we did nothing, and in 2013, we actually decreased the base rate by $2 per customer per month. And that's where we are today. And so that makes me, I don't know the reason why we decreased the rate in 2013, but I can venture to guess that there were sufficient reserves at the time that they felt we didn't need to increase rates longer, we, any longer. We had enough reserves to cover what we expected the future to look like. And so as time went on, you'll see that we continued to use some of those reserves, and we have continued to use some of those reserves in 2018 and 2019. And then you'll see that in the last two years, those reserves have dropped pretty seriously to where we expect to be at the end of 2023 at $3.6 million. Now, go back a couple of years, and COVID hit. We did not know that inflation was going to be where it was. We did not know that increases to everything across the board were going to take place, but clearly, you can see that our expenditures have certainly surpassed where our, the revenues that we're collecting. So we've continued to use those reserves. So let's talk a little bit about the impact that consumption has on our revenues. So if we, when we add a new customer, and I'm using inside city limit rates as the comparison, so when we add a new customer inside the city limits, that customer, based on 5,700 gallons of usage, is going to generate about $220 a year for our water system. For every 100 gallons of water that's conserved, about $2.30 is lost in revenue. Well, that doesn't sound like very much money, so let's look at the comparison. Let's say that we added about 150 customers to our water system inside the city limits. That's going to generate about $33,000 in revenue, but every single one of those customers are saving 100 gallons of water per month, you know, we charge that per month, and that's going to be a loss of almost $30,000 in revenue. So we're really not making a lot of gain as customers are conserving water under our current rate structure anyhow. So let's look at that working capital policy or what we talk about as our reserves, or again, in the general fund as a fund balance policy. This was adopted at the same time that the fund balance was, fund balance policy was adopted by the city council, and what it says is that the city will maintain a minimum working capital amount equivalent to 45 to 180 days of operating expenditures and outgoing transfers. So at the end of fiscal year '23, at that $3.6 million, we expect to be at about 126 days, which is a really healthy working capital. However, at the end of fiscal year '24, based on where costs are going and what we're seeing in costs and based on the revenues that we're collecting, we expect it to be only at 49 days. So again, continuing to deplete those reserves. Our target is 90 days. That, that is, that is the ideal target that we want to be at. So I also want to look at the water capital renewal fund. It is part of those base rates that we're going to be bringing, be bringing recommendations to you to look at. And so in this particular screen, this also provides you with historical revenues and expenditures, transfers, and working capital. There is not a working capital policy for project funds. The idea of a project fund is that you maintain a certain level to pay for your five years. You continue to use your future collections, and you always maintain something to help pay for that five years of capital improvement projects. At the end of fiscal year '23, we expect to be at about $3.1 million. Now, what do, what does the capital renewal fund pay for? What types of projects? What are the projects that are currently being funded through this fund? And so in fiscal year '23, the five-year plan that was adopted, these were the projects that were adopted that are being funded by that capital renewal fee that every customer is paying, and it totals about just over $15.7 million. Now, some of those monies will be coming from reserves and future collections of fees. We've talked about funding some of these projects through debt, through debt, and we will be issuing debt for the Santa Rosa Transmission Line as well as some of our distribution line projects as well, but that, these are the types of projects that are funded with that fee. So then, looking at our water rate study timeline, we actually hired Wildon Financial Services back in late 2017, and the purpose of hiring them back then was not so much having a rate increase, but really looking at the cost of service. If you recall, we did that with our solid waste system to make sure that our residential customers weren't subsidizing too much of our commercial customers. So we hired them back then to kind of look at the cost of service. We worked with stakeholders, we worked with, we shared findings with the Municipal Utilities Commission, we actually spoke with the council one time during that time as well. And then February 2020, we know what happened, COVID came, and we felt that it was, we should not be taking anything to the citizens restructuring any sort of rate at the time. And finally, as we are seeing what's happening with the reserves, we know that we need to address this, and so in June of 2022, we restarted that process and have been looking at the cost of service as well as looking at rates and rate structure, and that's where we are today. And so we're, in the next few months, we will be holding some public meetings to look at the rate, the rate study, and then upon and if council approves adopting rates, hopefully in fiscal year '24. And thank you so much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Moline? All right, Counselor Staley.
Do you know how we got into this situation where we have county residents in our water system? Why the county just didn't serve them? And I mostly ask because I know that infrastructure needs updating, and that's going to be a huge expense to the city, but, but that work is being done in the county.
Yeah, so I don't know the history on how we obtained the water system in the North Kingman area. I know Rob Owen definitely does. Phil may even have some background on that. No, and if Rob's not in attendance, Rob, Rob is on. Oh, great.
Well, maybe more importantly, is there a way to move those people to the county, you know, so that they can take on that responsibility or help partially with some of the infrastructure upgrades because that's directly affecting these rates, correct? I know they pay a little bit more, but it can't be enough.
So I would just say that we've been given a water service district or area by ADWR to provide service for people within that area. So there's no way of us really to divest ourselves from that. Whenever that happened a long time ago, they're our customers. They, I would say that the system and the rates that were established that Tina showed you are designed to replace old system infrastructure, no matter where it is. And the, I would say that the county customers are, our, our rates need to be reflective of replacing infrastructure inside and outside, and it's not something that we've been really afraid of with our, with the water system or the sewer, because we provide sewers help or services as well. All of the contributions from, from the rates go towards replacing all of the system, and that, when we show you the numbers, it really anticipates being able to take care of the entire system, not just within the boundaries of, of the city. So we mean, we recognize that some of it's aging out. That is a big part of our five-year capital replacement program on, on that water and sewer infrastructure for that matter. So I, I would say that what we're discussing as far as rate increases and what we're collecting should, should be able to cover the entire system, really not caring whether it's inside or outside the city.
Okay, I understand. I just, I remember years ago, a presentation was before you were here, Ron, and, and we, there was a map of all the underground infrastructure, and it, it was that North Kingman area that was, had the most red lines on it. It was, you know, it needs a lot of work, so that's why I asked.
It still needs, it still needs attention. You're, you're not wrong about that. You were absolutely right, and that is a portion of what's being done right now is taking care of the system outside of our boundaries. But again, for the water system and the sewer system, it doesn't recognize where the city's boundaries start and stop. It's, it's really about the system as a whole.
Okay. My other question is if this is the time when we can set a rate to really discourage any high-water users from locating, you know, locating to our industrial park? I know that's something that we've talked about before, and I know that Bennett and his team are really good about weeding those out, but if we had a rate that was just unaffordable for somebody that would come in and do damage to our aquifer, I think that would be another safeguard. So is that something that we could add to this?
So it is something we can certainly discourage use by looking at rates. There's no question about that, but be, and I don't know if we want to add some sort of industrial park rate or not. We have not considered that. We do know that our commercial rates and just looking at them overall are going to change, but it is definitely something that we can talk about with Mr. Foggan and city staff and see what we can incorporate, what, and what, what we're seeing best practices as well as far as incorporating something like that. Mr. Foggan, do you have anything else you want to add on that?
I would just say that we, we have a, a maximum daily that we've looked at, and I would really suggest that we take that case by case with kind of a overall understanding that we have a standard and depending, you know, depending on the industry and the importance of that industry, we would not necessarily, may not want to handcuff ourselves to, to that if they can bring water with them. That's one of the conversations I know we've had with several people that are several companies that have explored doing business in the industrial park is how can they, how can they pipe water from a different source? So it's, those are, you know, if, if it's a big operation and they have the wherewithal to bring a million gallons a day piped to their facility, that's a different conversation. So.
Well, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but, I mean, I personally wouldn't want to take that risk and let somebody locate here that is a large water user, you know, that's a huge investment to bring in their own water from somewhere. I think it'd be better as a site selector just to be looking and saying that this is not a place for us because we can't afford the water, and then we, we just weed them out. I, I can't, I can't think of any company that we would want here that, you know, it'd be worth it to our economy or to our, you know, to our town if they're a huge water user.
Well, I would just say that we talked, you know, a couple of years ago, we talked to a company that wanted to, was considering a $5 billion investment in a plant, and we gave them pricing for piping water.
And I think they wanted to use our reclaimed water, right? But we, I thought that was what they were looking at.
No, no. They, they, they did a little bit of reclaimed water process, but, I mean, part of that conversation was where are you going to, you're going to pipe water, and here's what we think it's going to cost you. And so, I mean, it was, it was a pretty good conversation. They ended up not being here, but, I mean, we definitely want to be able to leave on the table those opportunities where we, we can have the ability to evaluate. Clearly, we've turned people away or suggested that this wasn't a good fit based on the amount of water, and there's definitely, we get site selector worksheets all the time, and if they're, if they're north of 250,000 gallons a day, then we kind of basically say this really isn't the spot for you because, unless you want to bring water, so.
I understand, but I still would feel more comfortable if we just made it black and white, so maybe that's a discussion we have down the road. That's all I had.
Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Tina, what, what are we considering on raising? Is it going to be one of the base rates or is it the, of volume rates for residential, commercial, or irrigation, or could it be all of the above?
So I would say that we're looking at all of them, and we're looking at it because we're looking at it from a cost of service perspective. I don't know the last time that a cost of service study has been performed on all of our users, and so we are, we are looking at all of the rates across the board, inside city limits and outside city limits, residential, commercial, irrigation, and the different tiers as well.
Now, Manager Foggan, we just had a INA put in on the Walupi Basin. That's correct? And so there's a massive need to conserve water, but when I look at people declining their usage, they're doing exactly what we want them to do, which is save water and conserve. One of my deepest concerns is punishing individuals with higher volume rates the more that they conserve. I understand that there might be this gap we want to meet or raise, but I would feel extremely uncomfortable raising the rates on anyone using under 10,000 gallons a month. I do understand and share your sentiments, Tina, that, you know, people using over 10,000 in residential, over 45,000 gallons, that's concerning and alarming when most residents, I'm guessing, don't actually use that. Most residents on average are using roughly 5,700 gallons, right? Will there also be discussion about having tiers for commercial usage just as there are tiers for residential usage?
So what we have found is, again, that commercial customers don't really have an opportunity to conserve as much as residential customers do. So the standard practice is that commercial rates do not have a tiered structure, and so, so we will, we will be sharing probably a similar structure as to what we have in place for our commercial users.
Okay. And then one last thing on your slide, and my slide on 13 is different from yours, but on slide nine, the water operating fund, it looks like the revenues and incoming transfers is rising, just not as quickly as the expenditures and outgoing transfers, right?
That's correct.
But somehow our working capital is decreasing at the same time. So essentially, what this water rate increase would need to bridge the gap for is between the, I don't know, maroon or brown line and the black line?
That is correct.
And I'm sorry, can you go back to slide, like I said, 13 for me or 12 for me is different than yours?
And I apologize. I meant to point that out as I was putting, finalizing the touches on the slide. I realized I placed this slide on the slide, let's see, on slide 12 as well. So this is the slide that should be in your packets that we will include with the agenda minutes.
Okay. Do we have a, if I'm reading this correctly, is this black line the total amount of revenue that is being generated through our water enterprise?
It is the total amount of revenue that's being collected from the capital renewal fee that we charge.
Capital renewal fee, and can you just explain that to me and break it down for me real quick?
It's $3.75 per customer per month, and those monies are deposited directly into this fund.
And that's not the volume rate?
That is not the volume.
Okay. So this black line is only considering that amount, but not the volume rate?
Because the volume rate goes into the water operating fund.
I see. And then I had one last question. What is the capacity fee on page three?
Sure, so it varies. So it varies by meter size. So I want to say it's about $833 for a standard residential size meter, five eights by three quarters. As those meter sizes increase, so does the capacity fee.
Is this a monthly fee or annual fee?
No, this is only as you, yep. So any new user to the system pays this one time, and then they become recurring users of the system and pay into the base and the volume rate.
Thank you, Tina. I appreciate your clarification.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much. Since we've done anything with the rates.
quarters. As those meter sizes increase, so does the capacity fee.
Is this a monthly fee or annual fee?
No, this is only as you, yep. So any new user to the system pays this one time, and then they become recurring users of the system and pay into the base and the volume rate.
Thank you, Tina. I appreciate your clarification.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
So it's been 10 years.
Since we've done anything with the rates.
Put it best. Put it three or four steps down. That way we maybe take a public.
Agreed, and thank you so much, Councilman. Yeah, so standard practice is about five years that you're revisiting, five to seven years that you're revisiting. And so what we're looking at is a five-year study and then revisiting that every few years to make sure that we're on track. You'll, if you recall, the solid waste rate study that we put into place had kind of a five-year plan of increasing rates on an annual basis. But by revisiting that year over year, we have realized that we didn't need to institute that second-year and third-year rate increase, and we're thinking that in year four we'll need to. So it allows us that opportunity to revisit. And yes, we would definitely want to do this sooner than every 10 years. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just had a couple of things. The expenditures being more on the Water Operating Fund, does that do in part to, or a lot in part? Not in part, but is, does that have a lot to do with supplies, labor, all those kinds of things?
All of it.
Right. So when Counselor Pat talks about the water usage, it's not just about the water usage, it's about the wear and tear on the entire system. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's that, again, it's that gap between what we're collecting versus what it's costing to maintain our system.
Well, and it's the double whammy, right? Water conservation's great, but when it's tied, when that rate's tied to you providing system maintenance and it, water usage is going down and cost of services are going up, that's really the double whammy of getting farther and farther behind. So as Counselor Walker said, monitoring this and being more proactive on our rates is going to be beneficial with less, what I would say is knee-jerk reactions to watching retained earnings fall over time, which is something we want to avoid. We want that stable retained earnings, keeping up with operations.
And that's what I wanted to bring to light. It's not necessarily the usage, it's the wear and tear. Do you know what the average age of most of our water system infrastructure is? Because I would venture to guess it's fairly old. So, you know, I mean, we're seeing replace, we're seeing leaks, we're seeing, you know, all those things, so.
We know that Rob Owen provided that great presentation just at the last council meeting talking about our distribution and service line replacements, so clear.
I would recommend revisiting that because that information's in there and would, again, remind the council that a lot of the service lines were not aged out. They failed for Monsoon, Bedding, a whole bunch of other reasons. The system, I would say Kingman's water system is, there are spots where we have pretty old infrastructure, and I would say that we, as a community, have done a pretty good job of keeping the system fairly modern and up to date, but there are certainly some areas, as Counselor Staley pointed out, that have need to be upgraded. But as a whole, our water system's in pretty good working shape. I think Rob had pointed out, last year we had only 20 water main leaks, which is, was up again for an unusual year. But being under, averaging under 10 leaks on our main lines is a pretty good total, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Moline?
Yes.
Hi, Tina.
Hi, Councilman.
Having two different services as far as city and county. If we're looking at a type of increase possibly, and the county's infrastructure needs more work than the city, is it going to be across-the-board straight percentage, or is the city going to be a little less and the county take more of it? How are we going to be looking at that?
So, again, there are two different types, you know, of funds, but we do impose a larger fee on our outside customers. And we don't do that just because of infrastructure. We do it because it's the City of Kingman's citizens' system, and so they should receive some sort of benefit because it is their system. And so we do impose that rate. But when we're looking at the capital renewal fee, there will also, we are looking at a different rate differential for our outside city limit customers as well. Yeah. And I did want to point out, Vice Mayor, that right now, the way that our rate structure is, we actually set, and I don't know that I already shared this or not, so I apologize if I did earlier, but the way that our current rate structure is, is we collect a lot of our revenues from the volume rate. 70% of our revenues is actually collected from the volume rate. So we are looking to revisit that rate structure on.
I did want to say to Counselors Staley, I do agree that we should be discouraging high-volume users. And to Counselor Pat's, I would too like to see a tiered, something tiered for commercial customers. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I will just say for the commercial customers, it just, best practices is not going to, we're not going to be able to show up with a tiered system because, as Tina pointed out, that it works against your economic development somewhat. And, you know, we as residential customers can absolutely do things, take steps, but it costs what it costs for, I'll give you an example of someone. It costs what it costs to run a hotel, and the hotel can encourage its, the people staying there to conserve, but they can't just push a button and stop a shower, as an example. So that's why you do not see tiered systems in the commercial rates. It is just designed, really, the commercial rate is a straight rate, and it needs to be, needs to keep up with the rate system and not, really not need the support of the residential side, which is what we are currently doing with our rate system, is residential is currently supporting the commercial side. So the best that we can do is show up and share with you what those rates should be for the commercial side, knowing that the, commercial side doesn't have the opportunities that residential does in really saving water. And so, I mean, we'll definitely ask the consultant to look at it, but knowing kind of what the best practices are, that might be a pretty big stretch.
I still would like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have the Kingman Main Street presentation. Kingman Strong, Manager Foggan?
This item doesn't belong to me. It belongs to Counselor Staley.
Counselor Staley?
Yes. As I think Bennett will talk about here in a little while, the City of Kingman adopted the Main Street approach as part of our economic development plan several years ago. And given that we are talking about the, excuse me, the Beale Street infrastructure design project, and it's been a while, and we haven't really talked about the benefits of a strong historic downtown, or how that impacts economic development, or why even our consultants from Chabin recommended to invest in downtown and get it cleaned up as part of our ED plan. So it's been a while, so I thought it would be great if Kingman Main Street could come and do what they do best and talk about the approach that they use and why we adopted that several years ago. So this is Paul Gaines and Beth Ferry from Kingman Main Street.
Welcome. Thank you to you both for all that you do.
You took my entire introduction. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. And my name is Paul Gaines, and this is Beth Ferry. We're both active board members of Kingman Main Street. We are two of 11 board members. And we just decided we want to personally acknowledge Jack Pallante and Tina Moline because of the fantastic work that they do constantly for our city. And I'm a finance person, so anytime Tina steps up to the lectern, I get really excited. I just want to say that. I know. So, but we really appreciate it. You guys do fantastic work, and we're so glad to have you out the airport too, now Jack doing things with us out there. So thank you very much. So what we're here today for, as Jamie already pointed out, is to explain a little bit what Kingman Main Street is, but not so much heavy on what Kingman Main Street is, is in addition to the National Main Street program and how it really ties in directly to the downtown infrastructure project, how it makes sense, how it works.
Got to figure this one out. Page.
It's doing nothing. Oh, there it goes.
There you go. So I'm like Betsy. I have a really loud voice.
There's people on Zoom that will not be able to hear you.
Okay. Ron, you know how this bothers me. All right. So I know that this, everybody has seen this, this project design right here, but I think it's really important to understand that there are pieces of this, the whole design was created to really increase the traffic downtown, which means that if we can increase walkability, we can increase revenue. That's really how important that is. But when you look at this design, and some people say, well, we don't really need all those pieces of it, we're looking at it and we say, in the top corner, we have bump outs that are a safety feature for pedestrians. It creates a shorter sidewalk, and in addition, it slows traffic down Beale Street, which is a huge wide street. No, in addition to the bump outs, we're also going to have a mid-crosswalk section as well. So there will also be adequate lighting added to our street sections, which will increase pedestrian and roadway safety. In the bottom picture, you see these pedestrians walking on a sidewalk. We would hope that our pedestrians will walk on our sidewalk safely. They need to be repaired, they need to be constructed to meet ADA requirements. That will create a pedestrian zone. Next to that pedestrian zone is going to be an amenity zone, where you're going to have things like benches and bike racks and wayfinding signs and things like that. But mostly, it'll present a buffer between the pedestrian zone and the traffic zone, which is really also important for what we now understand as a perceived lack of safety in our downtown area. When you go into the plant section and people say, well, why do we really need trees, or they're messy, or things like this, well, first off is, is during the summer months, we have less traffic because that concrete is really, really hot. And so what you're seeing is people are saying, let's add some landscaping and trees to provide an appropriate shade. What's really wonderful is, is we have an opportunity to provide drought-tolerant trees and plants that will be seasonally beautiful. In addition, there'll be a supplemental watering technique, rain harvest utilization. So basically, those trees will provide adequate shade and a cooling effect for the pavement. While this infrastructure design has incorporated the necessary items in order to create a safe space, it is also creating an aesthetically appealing project, which I think is very important. You know, you can go into any downtown, or you can go into any area, if they are building an over, a highway overhead, they are putting in decorated tunneling things. So people want things to be beautiful, and we want things to be beautiful. So if you're going to be making it, if you're going to be redoing it, let's make it aesthetically appealing as well. So that is really understanding that these designs are meant for safety for the pedestrians because this is the walkability of our community. There is no other place where you're going to see people congregating and walking from point A to point B. So we want it to be safe and inviting for them.
So this aerial view just gives the scope and the limits of the project, and you can see it's along Beale Street going from First to Sixth, but it just doesn't stop at Beale. It goes south on Beale for the blocks from First all the way through Sixth, down a full block all the way to Andy Devine, which is our historic Route 66, as well as a half a block north. And so this really captures most of the downtown historic area, not just Beale. I've heard complaints before about Beale gets this attention and why not other places. Well, this will feed people from 66 into our historic area, into the shopping areas, which generates revenue, which increases taxes.
So this I've already done. So how did we get here? In 2016, the city officials, business owners, residents, we all gathered at the Central Church Downtown to talk about our downtown and to share some concerns we had, some solutions we had, and some dreams we had. You know, what was our vision? And there, it was a large, large group. And from that, we formed some partnerships. And that's where Arizona Main Street Organization became involved, the Arizona Downtown Alliance became involved, and the Arizona State Historic Preservation Office became involved. And then, from those meetings, we started meeting as community members, and that is where Kingman Main Street formed, is we said, we need an organization that follows this approach so that we can work with partners in making our vision become a reality. The concerns, the solutions, the vision, it was shared with the City of Kingman, and these, combined with the larger infrastructure issues that we have on Beale Street, were all put together, and the improvements became the downtown infrastructure design.
So that year in 2018, Kingman Main Street became a 501(c)(3), received our 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. And so we developed a mission and a vision statement. And Beth already, we talked about most of it, but I'll just read our vision statement right off of our, what do you want to call it? Thank you. Our vision is to forge partnerships, creating a unique and vital downtown that enriches the business community, embraces history, celebrates the arts, preserves our natural environment, and promotes quality events to instill a sense of place and community. And Beth's going to just point out some of our projects that we've done downtown.
So in a pretty short amount of time, I think we've been pretty active as a, oh, I'm sorry. All right. We have been an active group. So our first project was, as a newly-formed Kingman Main Street, was partnering with the Beale Street Theater in creating a mural, and that's the middle project, that is on the back of the Beale Street Theater. This mural has been the backdrop of many selfie, graduation pictures, and family photos. Currently, the Beale Street Theater is going through an extensive renovation, which you know. And when the exterior of that theater has been completed, Kingman Main Street will bring the artists back to do the necessary touch-ups so that that will be a preserved mural. We're super excited about that. We're really grateful to the City of Parks for all of their work they have done to enhance our trail system. So Kingman Main Street adopted, the White Cliffs Trail is our monthly cleanup project. That is, as some of our trail builders have said, that that is a gem that people simply don't know about. It's just beautiful. We introduced the annual holiday cookie crawl, held the first part of December. This event now is, we're now partners with Kingman Chamber of Commerce for this event, and anywhere from 150 to 300 people walk into the participating businesses during this event. So it's been a wonderful advertisement for people to go into shops and whatnot. We had adopted a pretty dilapidated kiosk on the corner of Third Street and Andy Devine, which you'll see at the bottom. It now looks like that with a new coat of paint and new plexiglass. We now have a very attractive kiosk that houses the downtown Kingman map, which we sponsor, and upcoming events. And our most recent and our largest project is the Kingman Tours, a walkabout with Jim Hinckley. We raised over $120,000 of grant monies and private investments. So when anybody asks you, our taxpayers shouldn't be paying for that, you need to let them know that our taxpayers aren't paying for that. We have a beautiful Depot Plaza that was constructed with that money in front of the train depot. This is the start of the self-guided tours, which include historical sites through the downtown. This is a work in progress as our goal is to encourage walking traffic from the powerhouse visitor center into our downtown, so people will stop along the way and shop and eat and drink and all those kind of wonderful things. So that's just a little bit about what our group has been able to do through great partnerships with both the city and various organizations.
So I think Councilman Staley mentioned that in 2018, the City of Kingman formally adopted. adopted the Main Street approach, led by Kingman Main Street. The purpose of this slide is to, is to show that Main Street equals an economic impact, a true investment in economic impact. It is said also by the national level, on, on Main Street, national level, that the key life success of the Main Street approach and Main Street America programs on the local level has earned Main Street the reputation as one of the most powerful economic revitalization tools in the nation. So every year, they do a large studies, and the most recent data we have from the national level of the Main Street program is in 2021. And rather than just going through and doing all the math, and you can check out the, the data where it comes from as well with this QR code, it's a 19 to 1 ratio. In other words, for every $1 invested in any kind of infrastructure and downtown input, it, it reinvests, it causes a reinvestment of $19. And they have all the strong data to support that. And this is why it's so important to put money into downtown. It, it drives business and it drives the economy for downtown.
So we've talked about the Main Street approach. This is the Main Street approach. Kingman City Economic Development adopted this approach. And this is important to see that this is a framework for community-driven comprehensive revitalization. So you can see down at the bottom where it says organization, that's where it starts. Build leadership and strong organizational capacity and forge partnerships. Then you move over to the design and you create an inviting, inclusive atmosphere and celebrate historic character. You go into economic vitality, you build a diverse economic base and catalyze, catalyze smart new investment. And lastly, promotion, you market your district's defining assets, you communicate unique features, and you support by local experiences. And it's by this approach that the National Main Street and that has become so successful and businesses have adopted this approach, because it is a revenue-driving tool. The City of Kingman, when, when we talked about when this design first became available, there were many, many public meetings. So this is not something that just showed up and people didn't know about. It's, it's been there. And since 2019, City Council unanimously approves funding to create a design to fix Beale Street. And then in October 20th, 2020, public outreach, there were City Council meetings for public outreach. November 2020, initial stakeholder meetings. 2021, the City Council unanimously approves funding for the downtown infrastructure design project. Then in 2022, the City Council unanimously approves ARPA funding in the amount of $7,147,000 for the downtown infrastructure design. That is a one-shot deal. How are you best going to invest that money? January 2023, just this past month, the city pays $520,000 for the design and the surveying. You can go onto that little QR code and actually see those public meetings that took place.
So as Beth pointed out, and it's been discussed before, there were a number of issues that were brought up and problems of why we wanted to fix Beale Street. And the design has resolved all these. I'm not going to go through the list of the comprehensive solutions, but I do want to go through the problems and just explain a tiny bit about what these mean and what they are. Businesses experience flooding from the street. This does happen. It's happened several times during the past monsoon season. Yeah, it was a heavy season, but there are businesses that do exist that get floodwater inside their front doors, have to deal with it every time it happens. This is mainly because of the antiquated sewer and drainage system downtown. This is a happening thing. Lighting is outdated and wire overhead is dangerous and limited, and it's dark in certain areas, and this is a lack of perceived sense of safety. Beale Street is too wide. There are unsafe sidewalks, not ADA accessible. And I brought up, I was asking someone about how our tours were going. I can't remember who it was. Someone was taking a small guided tour with the Kingman Main Street Tours. And they said, hey, how are the Hinkley Downtown Tours going? And she said, you mean the downtown tripping tour? And it was funny, but it wasn't funny, because it was true, and there are areas that need to be addressed. They exist, they're not safe, and they're not ADA compliant. Pedestrian safety, there are many accidents. There are sidewalk accidents, and there's been several incursions between pedestrians and vehicles downtown, and it's, it needs to be corrected. And that's part of the reason, because the streets are wide and that kind of thing. Traffic moves too fast, because the streets are wide. Attractiveness, the overall look of the district. Sure, if we're going to put the money into it, it's going to be upgraded, and it's going to look attractive. And this draws more people in. Conversations start happening. Tour guides from around the world start talking about upgrades. So it, it's known through the national level on Main Street approach that this indeed drives traffic and generates revenue. There are no wayfinding or areas to post events. These are wayfinding signs. We've seen these in some really fun little towns we all like to visit. We've seen how the areas are posted of what things or which direction and streets and historic markers, et cetera, and other places where downtown happenings are going on. This is a pretty simple thing to do and is, would be very, very beneficial. There are few benches and few bike racks. So these were all addressed in the design, but I am not going to go through and go one by one, because we've already talked about it.
So the downtown heart of Kingman. We have over 20 historic buildings downtown. Economically, it's Kingman's Civic Center. We have the City Hall, we have the courthouses. Those are all anchors. It's home to our powerhouse with 370,000 approximately visitors annually. Mojave Community College purchased a building. They share it with the Small Business Development Center and Kingman Chamber of Commerce. Downtown serves Kingman's Cultural and Entertainment District. This is where you're going to find our museums. This is where you're going to find our up-and-coming theater. This is where you're going to find art venues. This is where you're going to find multiple food and bar establishments with almost nightly live musicians. And then we have several business clusters laying the foundation of really a beautiful mix, including a lot of services, antique shops, vintage shops, retail shops, local markets, and event spaces. So downtown, the downtown is doing its part in bringing in important places.
Next. So because of this, numerous community organizers and other groups want to have events downtown. And this is a list of just some of them. We have the very large Rotary Oktoberfest and Mother's Day Festival of the Arts, Sounds of Kingman Concert Series in Metcalf Park, Andy Devine Days and Parade, Veterans Parade, Parade of Lights, First Friday, Chillin' on Beale, Farmers Markets, Route 66 Fun Run, Shop Small Saturday, the Cookie Crawl and Spring Hop and Shop Event, Mojave Pride Festival, She Strong Women's Triathlon, Tour of Kingman, and Tinker's Rattle Race. Those are bicycle events, and more. People want to be down there, is, is the point.
And when you, when you talk about events, this is where they're going to happen. And honestly, when they don't happen out downtown, somebody's complaining about that, that they're not happening downtown. So this, downtown is inviting a lot of different events, but there needs to be some changes.
So I won't read this list, but this is an example of public and private investment for the last several years downtown. There's millions of dollars from private companies, some from the county, a little bit from the city as well, but nonprofits, including our, our business. So there's many millions of dollars that have gone into downtown. But one thing that none of these people or organizations can do, especially the private companies, they can't do infrastructure. They cannot. So we believe the time is now for the city to step up and meet that same commitment and investment and improve the infrastructure that these companies can't do, and they're not even allowed to do.
So Supervisor Travis Lingenfelter had said, there really is no other one-third square mile within City, Kingman City limits that boasts a greater concentration of private capital investment than downtown Kingman. And I think that's important to remember. So I know that you all understand that the city is funded with sales tax. Many people don't understand that, unfortunately. Currently, the sales tax is 8.1%. However, the city only receives 2.5%. Is that correct? All right. The city doesn't tax food, correct? And the city does not receive any revenue through property taxes. Is that correct? Okay. Of the sales tax received, it's been estimated that about 50% of this tax revenue comes from tourists and other visitors. According to Kingman Tourism, we see approximately 379,000 visitors annually. 68 cents from every dollar spent at a local small business goes back into the local economy. We recently had a proposition that didn't pass, what was proposed as a means to bring in the revenue for road maintenance. Well, the downtown infrastructure design project will increase the pedestrian and automobile traffic through our downtown. We know that. It will increase that. This in turn will increase business sales, which results in an increase in our sales tax revenue. There is not, and I challenge you, if you don't really believe that this money is going to bring in more revenue, I challenge you to talk to some other small communities. Talk to the, the Williams City Council. Find out. Has their downtown increased the revenue of that town? Talk to Flagstaff, talk to Sedona, talk to Prescott, talk to Chandler, talk to St. George. You know, there, there is a lot of information out there that says downtown, it is the heart of the community. If you make your downtown nice, more people will go down there. More people go down there, they spend money. When they spend money, we increase our sales revenue, our tax revenue. So my feeling is a good, sound financial investment, which I think is something to think about, is when you spend money, that will make money.
Given the option, and look at it as investment as a windfall, this chunk of money comes in and you're given the option to do something with it. And yes, we do need road maintenance. We recognize that, but there needs to be another funding stream to figure this out on an ongoing basis. But you're given this one-shot deal to invest this money. And as a finance person, if they said, you can take this money and it's going to increase, there are, there's data support at like 20%, 30% more annual sales, it can happen. And I'm going to speak again at a later date to, to bring this up. It would be unwise not to make this actual investment. It's an annuity. It's an ongoing year after year, for long after most of us are going to be gone payout. It's going to keep, it's like a little slot machine paying off in the future. Keeps, it's going to keep going and going and going.
So in summary, thank you, City Council members who recognize the importance of our vital, vibrant downtown. We applaud our City Council members who are looking to the future and understand that short-term solutions are sometimes the easy vote, but not the best vote. The Kingman Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors recently stated revitalization of Kingman's downtown is imperative to the future of our community.
And one more, last thing, I'm going to make one more quote here from the City of Kingman Economic Development Strategy. Quote, "Downtown districts are a key, are key destinations for residents and visitors alike, and are also viewed as an important selling point for industrial business attraction. Downtown's offer consumers an experience unlike other shopping and business districts. A downtown's history, cultural amenities, and easy access to transportation make them a special place to shop, work, and gather. Downtown Kingman is a critical link to heritage tourism in the community's unique identity. It is the walkable district. That's the only one we've got. It is the walkable business district that offers original businesses a distinct sense of place, entertainment, and culture that all demographic groups, local residents and visitors alike crave." Direct quote out of the City of Kingman Economic Development Strategy.
So in closing, the success of the Main Street approach and Main Street America programs on the local level has earned Main Street the reputation as one of the most powerful economic revitalization tools in the nation. So when we invest in downtown communities, it has proven that there is a large return on our investment. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Paul. Councilors, do you have any questions or comments for either of them? Mr. Savage?
Thank you, Beth and Paul. And Beth, it's nice putting the face to the phone call. I'm not going to go into any details. I just have a question that maybe Mr. Foggan can answer. Route 66 is the heart and soul of Kingman. Why was that not included with Andy Devine?
Well, actually, Route 66 has been. Well, the connectors to Route 66 are part of there.
I'm talking between First and Sixth Street.
It, it's not really a walkable area. It's got one side before and traffic is much busier there and it's quicker there and that kind of stuff. The historical downtown region is one block over, and that's where all the historic district is and the more walkable pedestrian areas are.
And if, if, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've done some extensive work to Route 66 between the powerhouse, all that sidewalk has been redone, between the powerhouse all the way down to, maybe the past, well past the water tanks, you know?
We've actually did, reconstructed all sidewalks all the way up Travitor Hill.
Okay.
So that is correct. I would say that Route 66 is part of what this area is considering, was not considered because of the lack of basically businesses on 66 through the same area. And we're already looking at a really big project cost-wise, and so it was not ever, I don't believe that this community has ever thought that they could really tackle both areas. And bang for your buck, was, when we looked at it, was Beale Street. So that's why Beale Street was looked at.
There are a few active businesses there, but there, there aren't very many, which doesn't mean we should not promote them, which is one thing that we do. And, but again, half of that street is, is walkable, nice sidewalks, but there's no businesses along the other half. So, yeah.
Any other comments? Any questions? Councilor Walker?
Um, sure. I think this is a great project. It would make downtown the jewel of the desert, except the only problem I have is, you know, the return on investment with other issues we have going in the city. We've been kicking this can down the road for so long on taking care of our streets. And to, when, when this money came in front of this council in '21, and we voted to fund this, it was kind of crammed down our throat, I felt. I, I don't think we sat down and looked at other options to spend this money. And that's my concern. I mean, this project is going to make downtown Kingman. There's no doubt about it. This is a beautiful project. But as council, as council, we need to put staff on the line and say, how are we going to fix our streets? You know, let's get, make sure we have funding and a pathway. You know, I, I know we will never have a, a five-year rotation on our streets to be fixed, but to not have any option to just keep kicking that can down the road is not an option for me and spend this kind of money downtown, because what is our, you know, what is the real ROI on this project?
Well, there is that, and that, that's a fair question.
You know, that's, that's why I'm at, but this is a beautiful project. I'm, I'm for the project, but.
I'm sorry.
But, but, you know, we got to look at the whole city.
Yes.
You know, but this is a beautiful project. It will make Kingman, Arizona. Downtown will be beautiful with this, and we need it. But we, we need our streets too. And that's where I think this cheerleading session has come from. You know, this, this, you know, I thought when we saw this, I thought it was going to be downtown, your guys' organization kind of tell us what's going on. I didn't realize it was going to be a 30-minute.
Oh.
Streetscape deal. But, you know, but it's a great project. I'm for the project, but we just got to figure out how we're going to take care of our, our existing streets that we've kicked the can down the road. Because I think that's why this cheerleading session got on here, was we want to push this thing through. And I, I want to push this thing through, but we need to make sure we have a, a pathway to take care of our existing streets that we've kicked that can down the road for so long. That's where I'm at with this. But it's a great project. You guys do a great job.
Can I interrupt real quick? We just have some people talking over each other a little bit, so we just need to kind of slow down this conversation and just make sure that you guys get the recognition from the chair before you start.
Thank you.
May, may I?
You may.
Answer is, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I agree with the streets, 100%. The problem I have with just using the short-term, one-shot money is that the problems will still exist after that. So you're right, the city does need to come up with a better long-term solution. This is a, to take this money and put it into short-term areas of potholes and, and, and degrading areas of the streets, to have them just come back again without a long-term funding source and solution in perpetuity, that means we will have lost this one opportunity, which by the way, will increase revenue year over year over year. If we could do more of these, I think it's almost irresponsible not to pick out projects that are like this, that are going to return additional money and become an additional funding revenue source. Proposition, whatever they were, two of them were kicked, kicked down or, or kicked out. This is a revenue source, once it gets done, it will increase revenues. Who knows how much, but it, it's, it's going to really vastly make, I think it's going to be a huge difference. I think it's going to make, make the thing. It's going to make downtown Kingman, just like you said. I think it's going to be fantastic. I think we would regret not voting it in. And I think if it were voted in, years down the road, you know, a couple of years down the road when it's completed, you would be extremely proud to know what you were involved with and see it happening and just realize, oh, look, the revenues have ticked up. There's a little revenue source going back into the streets, that kind of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Ms. Staley, do you have a comment?
I just have a couple of things. You know, first, this is a, an educational session. It's not a cheerleading session. And I think you made a point that if you felt it was crammed down your throat. And I think you made a point that you felt it was crammed down your throat. But that isn't the case, because we had years and open meetings, and the community has been involved. And there was a timeline to show that this has been going on for years. And I asked you guys to come back, because I think a lot of people aren't familiar or weren't paying attention at the time. So that's why Main Street is here. Just a few things, I wanted to highlight that you did talk about an ROI traditionally is $19.34 for every dollar of public investment, that is the average. Another thing is that Jim Hinckley, he emailed me today with just a few other cities. I wanted to just quickly go over that in Shamrock, Texas, cities that capitalized on their Route 66 routes and made these investments, that in this one particular city, they saw a revenue increase by 34%. And then another Route 66 town, Pontiac, Illinois, they have made big investments in improving, making, doing placemaking and improving their areas around Route 66 to draw in tourists. They saw a 43% increase last year during their peak tourism season. And I would just dot that with the fact that the Grand Canyon is the second most visited national park. It sees 5.9 million visitors per year. Our tourism department, I don't want to take from his report that he's going to be giving, but as you mentioned, 370,000 visitors come to downtown Kingman. They're not just anywhere in Kingman, they know, they've done the tracking by credit card usage. 370,000, some are international, some are United States citizens are visiting our downtown. So if you think about 5.9 million people are in the area as visitors, we could be attracting, we could be capturing a lot more of those people if our downtown was more attractive, if it was something that was worth stopping and staying overnight. So while yes, we need to fix our streets, and we know already that we have the money to do that in the next couple of years, this is a long-term investment that will increase revenues, because I don't believe that to approve any more tax increases. So how else will we fix our streets if we don't look at investments that are going to increase overall tax collection in the long term? That is all.
Thank you, Councillor Daley. Councillor Ward?
Yes. It's a lovely project, but when you do a downtown infrastructure project at the expense of the rest of the city, it's not good. I've seen it done, I've seen a lot of these projects, and they were done and done well. And they do bring in a lot of money over a period of time. But the cities, I have not seen one city that's done it at the expense of the infrastructure in the city. And almost every city, that even the ones you've mentioned, Route 66 is the heart of. Williams, Winslow, all those. And this is 7.2 million roughly, and five blocks. That would chip seal a lot of streets. I mean, I'm torn, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see the project go, but not at the expense of the rest of the city.
Thank you, Councillor Ward.
May I reply to that?
You may.
Okay. I don't look at it at all as at the expense of the rest of the city. There's a one-time opportunity to do some chip sealing and it's going to go away. It's not a one-time, it's going to pay off years to come, so it may not be that initial $7 million that they could have done some work for the next couple of years.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. We are really, really straying beyond the scope of a report. And I've tried to be super leany before I keep jumping in, but some of these discussions really are, should be for a specific agenda item that will, or budget item that's maybe coming forward.
Okay.
Because giving that report and then just digging into some of these details are...
I appreciate the direction. I do have a couple of comments, and since I get the last word, I'm going to make my opportunity here. I really appreciated the presentation, I think there was a lot of education in there for the public. I really liked the fact that you honed in on some capital investment. One thing, I know it's not right on Beale Street, but there's a lot of capital improvement that's going into the Brunswick, and I would be interested to know what that is, if they would disclose. There was something that was said earlier, our downtown should be an experience. That's why we travel to other areas in the state, out of state. We, people are looking for that experience. And I feel like this project can create that experience for people, not only for them to come visit, but them to go talk about and draw more visitors in. I, to Councillor Daley's point, I feel like our visitors and our visitor numbers are highly understated. So, and to end with two Councillor Walkers' points, I believe that it's viable for us to do both. We had presentation on the roads during our budget workshop, there is a viable solution to do both. So in your presentation, you stated 68 cents from every dollar spent at a local business goes back into the local economy. What was our proposition 415?
Right.
.56. And that's, that should be spoken more in our community. So, great presentation, I've always been for this project, and thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor, one correction, if we could, please.
Absolutely.
The ARPA money rules allowed us to use that money to reimburse wages in the general fund, that then freed up money, general fund money, to be able to do this project. So I just want to make that clear, that this is not tied to ARPA money, because this project by itself would not qualify for ARPA money.
Thank you for that clarification.
Just of clarification on that.
Appreciate that, appreciate that. And thank you to the both of you for your excellent presentation. All right, we're going to move on to item number C, Economic Development Master Plan Report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have been operating under this master plan for about four years. And so it's been a while since we've reported on how we've done accomplishing it. And to kind of actually show you a possible go-forward in the future with this plan as well, so invited Bennett Bradley to walk you through what the ED team has done with the master plan, since it belongs to them. A big thanks to our Economic Development Commission for helping us actually put this plan together. And then, one of their main jobs is to basically babysit this and make sure that we are moving the plan forward. And so with that, Bennett is going to walk you through all the things that we've been able to accomplish and what we're looking forward to.
All right, thank you, City Manager. And good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I do appreciate the time to be able to present an update on where we are with the plan and kind of where we see us going forward. So I'm going to take this time to go over four years of implementation of that plan. It's 25 strategies that are outlined, and I'm going to do that in around 15 slides. So the Economic Development Plan is a working document. Many times, a lot of times, when you have these plans or any plan in general that cities put together, sometimes they end up on a shelf, and they never get implemented. That's not the case with this plan. We are in this plan every week, every month, implementing different ideas and concepts for each of those strategies. Now, all of the strategies have not been hit on, there's portions of the plan that we're still in process of, but it is a working document and it's going to continue. So, kind of as an overview, let's see, so I'm having the same problems, is it up-down arrow? There, it's delayed, okay. So in 2017, the City of Kingman put together an agreement for professional services with a company called Chaven Concepts. Prior to that, there was not an Economic Development Department. And so a lot of the economic development activities took place with a commission or a Tourism Economic Development Commission that they had. They were given some funds, and they administered those funds. But they didn't have staff that was, well, they had a, they had a planning department that handled some of the economic development features. And at the time, I was the Economic Development Director for the county, and so I'd work with them. But a lot of the stuff that might have happened around, the county really helped out with some of that stuff, you know, in Kingman, in Lake Havasu. But, you know, Kingman got a lot of benefit of that, but not really, they didn't really get the, you know, the activity that they really needed to do. And so, when that plan was done, they decided to hold off on going through that process until they hired an Economic Development Director. And so in 2018, Gary Kellogg was hired, he was my predecessor, and that was in May. And in August of 2018, I was brought in to also help. We also, the city took over operations of the airport and the industrial park. And so there was a lot of activity going on. And so we came in at that time, or I came in at that time as well. And the plan was completed in January 1st of 2019. So items that would be looked at, it was a collaborative endeavor to identify the City of Kingman's assets, challenges, and create these strategies. Each strategy contained actions to be undertaken and accomplished. And of course, there are 25 of those strategies. We adopted a vision statement with our, with our commission's help, and the team put that together, and that's up there. We also put together some goals, and I'll just kind of read through those goals while you read that mission state, or that vision statement. We look to sustain funding to support and collaborate, and collaborate with an aggressive economic development program. We wanted to have a goal of well-educated workforce, talent pipeline with skills today for tomorrow's employer's needs. We did a diverse employment base made up of employers that pay well, thereby reducing poverty in Kingman. An energetic and entrepreneurial culture. A thriving downtown that serves as a hub for arts, entertainment, tourism, and community activities. A community where people want to live and visitors want to return. Recognition of Kingman as the center of outdoor recreation in northern Arizona. The state and regional recognition of Kingman as the industrial and distribution hub for the West Coast. Stabilize and grow existing funding sources, grant opportunities, and new funding sources toward building a vital community infrastructure. And develop an airport that supports local and regional economic development goals while providing flexibility for new opportunities and shifts in those development patterns. So those were our goals, and that is our vision statement. Strategy number two was establish action teams for various projects. And here on the screen is a list of some projects. And we had various partners for each of those. Local First Arizona, we partnered with them for a membership subsidy program. Route 66 Drive-Thru Shield Partners included the Development Advisory Commission, us, the Economic Development Department, Office of Tourism, Route 66 Association. I won't go through all of them, but every single one of these programs here had various partners, like the Superchargers site, that was a partnership that we worked with, with Unisource on. So we had private-public partnerships on pretty much every single one of these programs. Some other programs here, and the dates that we've done them, and the returning dates. So strategy, I'm going to hit on strategies three through six. Three is to strengthen communications with the community. Our team regularly does following activities and seek ways to strengthen our communications. A few examples, we attend monthly Kingman Chamber mixers. We share ED programs with the Chamber, Mojave County Economic Development and Small Business Development Center. We prepared a retail prospectus, which we presented to council in the past. We provide reports to the Kingman Chamber, Mojave County Title Companies, Board of Realtors, just to name a few. We're also attending various community events. We do site visits with business owners on a daily and weekly basis. We meet with commercial plaza owners, commercial property owners, and local realtors. We post on Facebook, our websites. So these are things that we're doing above many other things to try to show the community what's going on in economic development. Institute leadership, team building and training. So the Economic Development Staff attends various economic development, retail, and tourism conferences throughout the state and the county. We participate in city leadership events, economic development training courses when appropriate. For instance, I was able to attend the Supervisor Academy the last session, and it was good, because now I'm actually the director, so that program was, it really worked, so. So those things that, you know, are local, you know, within our city that are offered, are very important. And I took advantage of that. So improve first impressions by eliminating and neglecting properties. We worked with an infill incentive district to incentivize those areas to be improved. We have the facade improvement program, which is very successful. And the murals program coming soon that Sylvia went over at one of the last council meetings. Another item that was listed in the strategy was to update the zoning code and development code. At the time when the economic development team was formed, we were also under the, planning and zoning was under that department. And so the original Kingman zoning ordinance was adopted in 1971, re-adopted in 2001. There were over 290 text amendments, 516 zoning changes since its adoption. And it was, the update was obviously long overdue. And in June of 2019, Lisa Wise Consulting was hired to guide the city through that process. The new zoning code took effect, I believe, on June 6, 2021. So strategy seven was to increase and stabilize the city's revenue by building a diversified tax base. You guys went over a lot of that earlier. So the report suggested other taxing mechanisms, such as a property tax, which is the most stable form of potential revenue. But obviously, the city doesn't have one in place. Establishing one would require a vote from the citizens, and council periodically looks into that. The things that we can kind of control, you know, as more industries, more companies come in, it does make the region better, higher-paying jobs. And then they shop more, so we can increase the income or the sales tax. So Kingman's current, another thing we look at is when we're out locating, particularly on the retail side of things, is our average household income. And in 2021, it was $56,488. So we anticipate that to increase to $65,375 or more by 2025. So this is projecting, it aligns with our anticipation in our population growth and new industry and commercial growth. Strategy eight, expand, so they had recommended, obviously, expand the staff economic development, support economic development marketing initiative. It takes money to fund, you know, an economic development department. And currently, the department is comprised of a director, two project managers, and we share a part-time... share a part-time administrative coordinator at this point. So that FY23 budget is $671,501. And economic development is, tourism is under economic development. And that department comprises of a tourism manager, two administrative assistants, a visitor center coordinator who manages seven part-time customer service representatives. And their FY23 budget is $1,244,860. So strategy nine through 12, implement a business retention and expansion program. We did that. And this is basically going out to business community in the industrial park as well as throughout the, the city and local businesses and talking with them and working with them. We also invested in a constant contact management software where we can keep track of our projects, all of our contacts as we're working on those projects. Number 10, strengthen the economic development team. This kind of falls in line with the previous, the previous strategy seven or eight. And, but in addition to that, what we do is, other ways that we strengthen our team is we partner with other city departments. You know, we, we have other city departments. And so the more that they're aware of economic development, how that benefits them, we, we do use them. We also work with the Mojave County Economic Development Department as a partner and other utility providers, Kingman Chamber, and the State Economic Development Department, the Arizona Commerce Authority. We work hand-in-hand with them. Oh, I don't want to do that. Number 11, prepare Kingman's industrial real estate. So when we, we, I came in, one of the things that we, we did right away is we wanted to be able to show listings that were avail- available for commercial properties, just on the commercial side. And so we implemented an IDX feed through the Local Realtor Association as well as properties that aren't in that system. Brokers are able to access our website, put them in there, and advertise their properties as long as their commercial will approve those. And so we work closely with real estate agents, land developers, you know, to, to get their properties out there. We set up that property locator tool, that's on that choosekingman.com website. We became an associate member of the local Kingman Valley Association of Realtors. We, of course, work with city utilities, electric, gas, and internet mapping of the Kingman Industrial Park utilities. So we went in and we mapped out where all the utilities were along our sites that we have as well as any private development. So when businesses come in looking for a location, we can show them, here's all the infrastructure that's around that so they can have an idea of what they're looking at. We'll continue to work on phase two of the industrial park. And so all of these activities, just on the, on the industrial side, have led to, in the last four years, seven land sales, producing over nine point, or $2.9 million in land sales that gets reinvested into the airport. Just on the leasing side of projects that we've worked on for existing businesses that has nothing to do with our land sales that we're doing, we've got about 480,000 square foot that we leased out there in the industrial park, which added about another, another 103 jobs for those projects. Let's see, I've got one more, or a few more. Grow the talent pipeline with skills that will support Kings and, Kingman's economic future. So currently, Gary Kellogg was on the Mojave-Lopaz County Workforce Development Board. I'm gonna be stepping on that board. We also participate in the Mojave Community College Advisory Council focusing on workforce development. We're actively working with Mojave County or the Mojave Community College on an advanced manufacturing training center. And hopefully, you know, if everything goes well with that, classes, they hope to have classes starting in 2025. And we coordinated with Mojave County Workforce Department to help businesses look at the requirements of their employees for existing and new businesses. So we partner with Mojave County Workforce as well. And working our way through these. Strategies 13 through 19, implement a consistent, focused, and well-funded marketing and business attraction program that supports the necessary data, tools, and materials. That's what is our straight out of that plan. So what we did and will continue to do is we create print, electrical materials to support Kingman's messaging and marketing efforts. We extended and reinforced Kingman's value proposition by creating maps, property profiles, proposal, response content. So when we get leads that come in, how are we gonna respond to them in a timely manner? We put together operational cost analysis for businesses. We have programs to do that so we can show them what it costs to operate here versus competing communities. We put two comprehensive websites together since we started. And so, you know, on that, we've also done annual reports on an annual basis, which I've brought those documents. And what's really neat about those reports is you can look back and say, where were we in 2020, 21, 21? Our next report that we're working on right now is 2022. Prior, or 14, prioritize currently available sites and buildings for near-term retail development. We've already mentioned the infill incentive district. Building permits, plan review, report review, and inspection fees are waived for any commercial development proposed in this district until December 31st, 2025. We also just recently put together an interactive vacant commercial la- land and industrial map. We worked with our engineering department on that. So we can look at all of the available or potentially available vacant properties that are out there and, and then put them in touch with the owner or the broker of those sites. Coordinate marketing and communication to targeted industries. So we do have excellent tools for marketing Kingman and attracting new companies and retailers to Kingman. Mentioned our award-winning website. Businesses and people interested in the community can find all kinds of resources on that. We did a, an ASU pass-through study where we looked at the traffic that comes through and the value of that coming through on I-40. We, we currently work with industrial maps, leakage reports. So with all these tools, our economic development team, Kingman will continue to attract new companies, hotels, restaurants, and retail for the years to come. And we'll always look for new tools out there. That is always one of my goals is to look for new ways that other communities are using to, to bring in new retail and new businesses. Implement a retail visitation program. It's the same concept that business retention expansion. We also do that on the retail side. Sylvia, who's here tonight, is always talking with businesses throughout the city. And number 17, cultivate a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem that encourages local startups. Just to list a few of the things that we've, we've done under that item. We worked closely with the Small Business Development Center through the college to promote resources, offered it to entrepreneurs. And some of those resources include startup assistance, business planning, marketing, and marketing research, business management, and access to capital. We also work closely with Mojave Community College to promote resources such as opportunity to attain an associate's degree in business education, entrepreneurship, or take classes to refine the skills in Microsoft Excel, Word, and other related training tools. We partnered with Local First Arizona to promote entrepreneurial programs such as the Business Support Services, Food Entrepreneurship, Shop Local, Green Business Certifications, Restaurant Startup Bootcamp, Scale Up, and We Rise. And our office tourism visits, small businesses related to tourism to take updated photos and update the Google My Business. A lot of times when you go to Google, if their business changes, it doesn't automatically get updated. So, you know, we encourage businesses to do that. So when somebody's coming to our community and looking, they actually find what they're looking for. Actively pursue retail attraction. So our ET, our Economic Development Team, we know of the need for dine-in restaurants, retail shopping, and more. We work with several commercial property owners, like I said. So our team is working on some promising commercial projects right now. You know, there, there's always activity going on. Some of the current programs that we do on the retail side is interactive vacant commercial maps and industrial land maps. We keep relationship with those plaza owners, marketing materials around commercial property for sale or lease and place them on our websites. We attend the International Shopping Centers Conference. We make weekly direct emails and phone calls to, to the desired retailers that we think fit our community. We obtained, we recently obtained some updated leakage reports from Placer AI and then Buxton. We have a partnership with the county who has the Buxton information. So we get that information and we use that. We provide, obviously, those economic development annual reports. We created that ASU pass-through study. And we are working, currently working on a site plan project for the city-owned land on the Kingman Industrial, Kingman Crossing across the, the way that the city owns. 19, formalize the Main Street organization. We did, back in March of 2020 through 2021, we actually hosted the Kingman Main Street AmeriCorps Vista, Vista Program. And we coordinated that through Main Street. And that was one of the partnerships that we did through, with them. And as you could see tonight, you know, they're thriving and we continually work with them, attend their meetings. We're getting close. Strategy 20, branding strategy was completed and adopted in June of 2020 as part of this strategy. So Route 66 was implemented, the campaign around the heart of historic Route 66. Tourism has developed external, you know, campaigns around the outdoor adventure, Explore Kingman theme. We updated the billboards with the trail images and the breweries in May of 2021. And we have Explore Kingman YouTube video campaign that they did, released in November 2021 with over 448,000 views. I don't know that we have time. I do have the video there, but I, I'm gonna just continue. But please, you know, if you get time, check out that YouTube video. So we consolidate tourism marketing initiatives under a single organization. That was one of their recommendations. And when the study was conducted, the economic development team was, team was being developed. So at the time, obviously, we didn't have a team. There were other grassroots organizations during that time that, you know, different groups that were saying, we want to do economic development, and these things were going on. So a lot of those groups just kind of went away once the economic development team came in, started doing what we were doing and creating all of the synergy and the activity. And so we, we were glad to see that we kind of met those things that, that weren't being met in the past. So they really coalesced around the Kingman Office of Tourism and, like, Kingman, Main Street, Arizona Route 66 Association, Kingman Chamber, and Mojave Economic Development Department are all partners that we work with. Implement a community-wide hospitality consumer program. So this is a work in progress. As I mentioned early, we are, you know, still working on some things. The partners for this include the Kingman Chamber and the Mojave County Economic Development Department. So there, there's more coming down the road in regards to this item. And then 23, implement a business retention expansion program focused on hotels. So our team started meeting with hospitality representatives in 2018 and 2019 to create the resource network for hoteliers. The effort was sidelined at the onset because COVID. However, is relaunched in August of 2022 with three bi-monthly meetings held so far, August, November, January, and a third is planned here in March. Strategy number 24, continue to implement the 2003 Wayfinding Plan. So these are some of the items that, that we've done since then that play a role in that, in that study from 2003. The Welcome Arch, light pole banners, updated billboards, Route 66 signage to be updated with the LED message boards, street pole signage, including the Beale Street Streetscape And then strategy 25, identify the top five visitor infrastructure projects. And so the Kingman Visitor Center Monument Sign, which was completed, Drive-Thru Shield was completed. Continue neon sign installations downtown along Route 66. We continue to look for signs and putting them up along Route 66 to draw people further down Route 66 when they visit. The LED message boards are in process and EV, the EV experience. I guess in closing, the Economic Development Department's strategies open new doors for people's growth and prosperity. An effective local economic development department can generate jobs, reduce social inequality, and improve investor information flows, which lead to more private investment, higher productivity, and better competitiveness. Cities with more resources will in turn be able to increase tax revenues, increase jobs, and increase opportunities for their citizens. We believe Kingman's future is promising and heading in a positive direction with the future interchange, interchange projects that are coming. Those are progressing forward. More companies choosing to expand and to locate out at the industrial park and new retail and small business openings in town. And a thriving economic development department, we believe this growth will tend, trend will continue. So with that, thank you very much, and if there are any questions? I know it was kind of long.
That was a lot to digest.
I know, it's a big plan.
Very, very comprehensive, but thank you, very much needed. Counselors, do you have any questions, comments for Mr. Bratley?
Just a comment, excellent job, that's all.
Yeah, it was, it was very, very well done, so thank you for the time. Counselor Savage?
Look forward to seeing you Tuesday.
Tuesday, yes, okay.
Counselor Staley?
Thank you for your presentation and, and thanks to your whole department, including Gary Kellogg. You accomplished a lot in just a couple of years. You know, one of the reasons why I ran for city council was because I was fed up with the short-sighted decisions that our leaders had been making for years, leaving Kingman's economy weak and stagnated. And we had to fight hard for the funding for this Chabin report, to have experts come in and look at our economy and give us these strategies. We fought hard for that. And what we have seen, well, first of all, their results told us exactly what we had thought. We weren't doing enough for economic development. We weren't doing enough to support our economy. And we had a ton of opportunity that was just going untouched. And so I am really proud of the fact that we fought for something and we were right. And the results speak for themselves when you talk about 480,000. for themselves. When you talk about four hundred and eighty thousand square feet of expansion, and that's just in one sector of our economy, that is really impressive. And there was a lot of work to be done, but we are seeing it every day. New jobs, new people coming here. And so, I'm thankful for that. And I'm glad that we were able to kind of turn things around. So, I had some other questions for you, but it's getting late. So, the one thing that I think people care the most about, and what we always hear, is that there's not enough places to shop, there's not enough restaurants, there's not enough entertainment. Bennett, over the next couple of years, what do you see happening in Kingman? Do you see more of these things coming to town after we've laid the groundwork for them?
Yeah, absolutely. I do, I do see that. I see us infilling currently land that is along Stockton Hill and some of these other areas. But the real push is when those infrastructure projects come to be, the Rancho Santa Fe, the Kingman Crossing, you're going to be able to see some potential big box or other developments that will be able to want to coalesce around an access from I-40. So, that's kind of the next big push. You know, for now, we're going to be able to infill, continue to try to infill some of the areas. Will add to some congestion. But, you know, as those bigger projects move forward and take place, that's where a lot of economic impacts are gonna come from.
Very good. Thank you so much.
So, what you're saying is we're just getting started?
Yeah, I mean, it's exciting.
I think the citizens need to hear that.
Very exciting.
Thank you to the ED team and for your leadership. I know that we're going to just carry that department forward, and there's going to be a lot of economic growth in Kingman, which we all would love to see. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Item D, under Department Reports, Traffic Interchange Update. Manager Foggan?
Thank you. I have no presentation, so I'm just gonna walk you through this. Both what was just referred to as the traffic interchange projects are currently moving forward in different stages. Start with Rancho. Rancho Santa Fe is currently under, we are working through an environmental assessment with the FAA to have the land released so that the road can actually, Rancho Santa Fe Parkway can actually tie into the industrial park and be the new entrance and exit out of the airport. Currently, we're limited to one, which is out onto sixty-six. So, this continues to be a super important project. I will also report that I have had a conversation with the developer, that is KDP manager, and they are still trying to work through their partnership issues. They're actively working to get that, that issue resolved so that they are ready to move forward. We are actually, I know Bennett and his team have reached out to share with them some of the projects and information that we are getting that they could benefit from as well. So, that environmental assessment currently due to be complete, according to the schedule that's been provided, is July thirteenth. We obviously think that that is wildly overestimated by sixty to ninety days. And so, the draft EA is already in the hands of the FAA, being reviewed, and is, I'm not sure if it's to their legal department yet or not, but we believe that there's at least sixty, if not more, days built into their schedule for legal review that will not be needed. So, we expect to be done with that much sooner than July thirteenth. Kingman Crossing. Kingman Crossing is, their plans were just submitted to ADOT and to the city at sixty percent. That project is moving forward at a pace in which the schedule showed, which shows them being at a hundred percent plans by the end of April. I have a meeting with the hospital, the new hospital CEO, to talk to him, bring him up to speed on the project, and also to talk about the needed date changes in the development agreement that, that absolutely needs to happen, mostly for their benefit, I would think. But the agreement, as you recall, originally got a timeout called on due to the pandemic, but they are up and running and active, moving that project forward. So, as Bennett indicated, one of the things that we are doing is we are actually working on having this, basically the south side of Kingman Crossing, the retail or commercially zoned area that the city controls, be part of master plan, commercial master plan, so that once the hospital and their developer are up and running, that we will be ready to be able to move forward on the south side of the, of the project as well. So, both projects are progressing. Obviously, I believe Kingman Crossing, right now, if they were in a footrace, Kingman Crossing is now ahead. Where they were, they would have been much further ahead had they not called timeout back in March of 2020. But they're now catching up. And having sixty percent plans submitted is a pretty big deal. And so, and just a reminder, AECom is the engineering firm that they chose to work with, which we like that idea because we've been working with them successfully for a number of years now. So, those are my traffic interchange updates.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Are there any comments, questions from counsel?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Pat?
Yeah, just because I'm impatient. When do you expect we'll break ground on the Kingman Crossing? Not even close?
I can give you...
Hypothetical?
A hypothetical, which at a hundred percent plans in May, bid process, bid documents, another two months. So, probably late summer, early fall.
Of twenty-three?
Yeah.
Oh, so sooner than twenty-four?
Sooner than twenty-four, yes.
So, if Kingman Crossing, Rancho Santa Fe, and the interchange between the ninety-three...
The West Kingman T.I., yes.
The T.I.?
Yeah.
We're in a race. Who's in the lead?
Kingman Crossing.
All right. Good to know.
In my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. All right. Announcements by Mayor, council members, and city manager. We'll start with you, Manager Foggan.
I would just, basically, make sure everybody's aware that we're under a high wind warning for the Kingman area, and that's going to be followed by some pretty bad cold, cold spell with possible snow. So, just encourage everybody to be careful in driving and negotiating with this really bad weather that's on us for the next few days.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Nothing.
Counselor Savage? Counselor Ward? Counselor Staley? Counselor Pat?
Nothing, Dad.
Mayor Watkins?
Hey, good to see you all. I just, as always, appreciate all that everybody does in our great city to move, try to move it forward, our city staff, and of course, our citizens. So, thanks again, and let's all try to continue to work together.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. Nice to see you. I just wanted to announce that I attended the Tri-City Council earlier in the month. I know Counselor Staley was there, Counselor Ward was there, Mayor Watkins obviously was chairing it as well, or up at the dais. So, lots of information disseminated, and it, it's always nice to see the councils working together in the tri-city area for the common good. So, I just wanted to say that. Council requests for future reports and updates, counselors? Anything? No? All right. With that, we are going to go into executive session. The city attorney requests that council go into executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh three A four to discuss and provide direction regarding the draw-site litigation. I need a motion.
I'll move. I'll second then.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I thought, oh, is she in?
Yeah.